Good evening. The February 20, 2025 meeting of the Woodbridge Township Board of Education will please come to order. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Bourdain.
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Here.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Mr. Mohammed.
Here.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Secretary, as required by the Sunshine Law, please read the notice of meetings.
Thank you, Mr. President. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies of which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted as follows: on January 21, 2025, emailed to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Municipal Clerk's Office, posted in Ross Street School Number 11, and the Board of Education Administration Building, also published on the school district website.
Thank you very much. Dr. Massimino, please introduce our student representative, Darshana Shah, from JFK Memorial High School.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Darshana Shah is a very ambitious, well-rounded student who exhibits a confidence and maturity not often seen amongst high school students. During her junior year, she was inducted into the National Honor Society, National English Honor Society, and Science National Honor Society. Darshana devotes her time unselfishly to JFK by participating in various student organizations, including the Kennedy Cancer Society, Heroes &amp; Cool Kids, and the Superintendent's Student Advisory Council, which I will say, she's a tremendous contributor, and it's a joy having her. As a member of the following student groups, she holds leadership roles in Student Council, Senior Class President, Future Business Leaders of America, Vice President of Marketing, Model UN President, and Dance Exchange Choreographer. Darshana serves as captain of the varsity volleyball team, as well as being an integral member of the spring track team. Outside of school, she volunteers at the local public library and John F. Kennedy Hospital and is active with the American Legion Auxiliary Jersey Girls State Program. It is evident that Darshana is a passionate student who has been a great asset not only to John F. Kennedy Memorial High School, but to her community as a whole. Darshana looks forward to continuing her education and pursuing a career in political science. Darshana, thank you for being with us this evening.
Good evening, and thank you for inviting me here today. The Woodbridge Township School District hosted their first Title I Family Night for this school year on January 28. The first night was focused on kindergarten and first-grade ELA activities. Students got to spend time with their teachers and families, working at different ELA stations. Our second Title I Night will be held on February 25 and will focus on STEAM. Many of our elementary schools celebrated their DARE graduation ceremonies, where students learned strategies to say no to drugs. Mobbe Street School One will be hosting science family nights for fourth-grade students and parents to participate in fun and educational activities. School One collaborated with Woodbridge High School's Saffron Alliance and Woodbridge High School's Chinese Honor Society for a fun-filled multicultural visit. At School One is also participating in the American Heart Association Kids' Heart Challenge. Our school goal is $10,100. The challenge ends on February 28. Students at Indiana Avenue School 18 will be learning about important African-Americans during the month of February for Black History Month. The Isling Middle School Dance Club visited Indiana Avenue School 18 and taught an Indic Heritage dance to our third graders. At School 19, our MPT students showed impressive growth in their Lincoln scores for both language arts and math. To celebrate their hard work and progress, we hosted a Grow &amp; Glow Party on February 7 as a reward. On February 11, Menlo Park Terrace and the Ford's Library teamed up to host a library family night, offering all our students a fun and engaging opportunity to participate in reading activities. In celebration of Indic Heritage Month, dancers from the Dance Exchange at John F. Kennedy High School performed for all our MPT students, showcasing a vibrant cultural experience. At School 26, JFK High School's Indic Alliance Group held an all-school assembly to celebrate Indic Heritage Month. Our Grade 2 students will be visiting the Woodbridge Town Hall, and our Grade 5 students will be visiting the Woodbridge Historical Association Museum. Our Student Council organized an all-school assembly with reading activities for World Read-A-Loud Day. At School 29, the Isling Middle School Dance Club visited Oak Tree Road School and taught an Indic Heritage dance to our second graders. In observance of Indic Heritage Month, they performed together. Ford's Middle School Honor Society and Landscaping Club collaborated with presenters from JP Stevens High School to learn about American bitters, as well as build habitats to be placed in the brackish marshes. Ford's Middle School's annual Blue &amp; White Challenge basketball game was held on January 31 to raise funds for two scholarships to be given to a student at John F. Kennedy High School and Woodbridge High School. Our students celebrated and learned about the Chinese Lunar New Year. And finally, at JFK Memorial High School, on January 13, we hosted our second annual Indic Alliance Heritage Month celebration. On February 3, we inducted 24 students into the Tri-M Musical Honor Society. And on February 11, we hosted the district-wide Black History Month celebration, where secondary students from around the district showed off their talents in the areas of dance, song, poetry, and instrument. It was incredible night of bringing students together. Thank you.
Thank you, Darshana, for your detailed report, and thank you to Dr. Parry for joining us this evening, Principal of JFK High School. Tonight, you're welcome to stay, but judging by your resume, you probably have about five or six things you've got to get to. So you're welcome to stay, but if you need to excuse yourself, feel free to do so.
Thank you so much, but I do have a lot of work today, so unfortunately, I won't be able to stay.
Understood. Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you.
Ms. Bourdain, please read the closed session statement, please.
Mr. President, in compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board must go into closed session in order to discuss subjects exempted from the public portion of our meeting. The discussions to be held in closed session will be regarding personnel matters, and the Board will receive attorney-client advice. Any information regarding the closed-session discussion will be released to the public when reasons for discussing these matters in closed session no longer exist.
Thank you. I have a motion by Ms. Bourdain. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Bourdain, seconded by Mr. Treibwasser. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Gary. Board will retire to closed session, and we'll be out as soon as possible. Please rise for a salute to the flag at a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as it is created.
Do I have a motion to reconvene?
No motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Treibwasser, seconded by Mr. Sedana. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Bourdain.
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Here.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Mr. Mohammed.
Here.
Mr. Sedana.
Here.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Here.
Mr. Velez.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Well, someone make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
No motion.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, I have a motion by Mr. De La Pietro, seconded by Ms. Perez. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's carried. Roll call. Excuse me. Mr. Secretary, please state for the record any notices of bids received by the Board.
Thank you, Mr. President. On January 28, 2025, IFB 25-17 for Student Transportation Services.
Thank you very much. Dr. Massimino, please state for the record the superintendent's reports for the month of January 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I presented to the Board the following reports: student registers and fire drill reports, suspension reports for elementary and secondary schools, bomb threat reports, and reports of the attendance officers.
All right, excellent. Thank you, Dr. Massimino. Public session here. The Woodbridge Township Board of Education welcomes and encourages active, productive, and respectful participation by members of the public, and seeks to protect the First Amendment rights of those who engage in the exercise of free speech at this Board of Education meeting. Members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. The budget is... Excuse me. The public is now invited to speak regarding the agendas being presented this evening. When you come to the microphone, please provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside, along with the specific agenda item you wish to discuss. As per Regulation 1100D, comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No responses will be given until you have completed your opportunity to speak. Anyone wishing to speak on tonight's agenda, please come up to the microphone. Seeing none, we will move on to the superintendent's agenda. Dr. Massimino, do you have any recommendation for us?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have 24 items to present to the Board this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Massimino. Do I have a motion on the superintendent's agenda?
Make a motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Treibwasser, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Seeing none. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Mr. President, I abstain on item number 24, and yes on all others.
Ms. Perez.
Mr. President, I also will be abstaining on item number 24 in the name of Rutgers, yes to all other items.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
And Mr. Harris.
Yes. Communication, Policy, and Planning Agenda. Mr. Mohammed.
Mr. President, the Communication, Policy, and Planning Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, presents the following 10 recommendations. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mohammed. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. A motion by Mr. Mohammed, seconded by Ms. Perez. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? I want to make two this evening, just highlighting two items on the agenda here. Item number one, there was a parent who brought to the district's attention, as well as Woodbridge Township Municipal Government's attention, a proposal to slow down some of the traffic on Route 35 just outside of this elementary school, in the interest of students who do walk and are crossed Route 35 by a crossing guard. Similar to Woodbridge High School, there's a proposal to drop the speed limit during the school hours. This Board tonight is looking to move a resolution, commending ourselves, and urging the New Jersey Department of Transportation to consider that measure. And I know the municipal government will follow... has already done so, or will follow suit shortly. And I want to thank the constituent, a Ross Street School 11 parent, for bringing that to our attention and looking out for the safety of our students. And then, number two, speaking of safety, I want to give a shout-out to Sheriff Millie Scott of the Menlo City County Sheriff's Department. Her office and her Community Affairs Department provides free DARE education... drug education to our fifth graders each year. So tonight, we're recognizing her department with a resolution. So, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to comment on the Policy and Planning Agenda? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Wolferman.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes. Curriculum, Extracurricular Activities, and Technology. Mr. Sedana.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Curriculum, Extracurricular Activities, and Technology Committee, on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, presents the following 18 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sedana. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr... Excuse me, Mr. Sedana, seconded by Mr. Treibwasser. Any comments or questions from the Board?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
One of the things that I just wanted to appreciate and congratulate the administration and Mr. Faustino for, in terms of curriculum, is this is something we'll be discussing in depth later, but the COGAT test that not only talks about the academic performance of a student, but also the cognitives... the cognitive ability in understanding patterns, problem-solving abilities, things that are... that were considered at some point non-academic, but have now been brought into the fold, really helps us understand the methodology with which a student learns. So I appreciate that that has been put into play from an administration standpoint. So, thank you, guys, for that.
Thank you, Mr. Sedana. Anyone else wishing to make a similar comment? No. Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes. Finance and Insurance Agenda. Mr. Treibwasser.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance and Insurance Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, presents the following eight items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you very much, Mr. Treibwasser. I have a motion by Mr. Treibwasser. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Treibwasser, seconded by Mr. De La Pietro. Any comments or questions from the Board? Hearing and seeing none, Mr. Wolferman, roll call.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
And Mr. Harris.
Yes. Safety and Security Agenda. Mr. Velez.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Safety and Security Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, present the following two items, and I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Very good. I have a motion by Mr. Velez. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Velez, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Any comments or questions from the Board? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes. Thank you very much. Buildings and Grounds Agenda. Ms. Perez.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Buildings and Grounds Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, present the following four items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Very good. Ms. Perez, I have a motion by Ms. Perez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Ms. Perez, seconded by Mr. De La Pietro. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Hearing and seeing none. Roll call, Mr. Wolferman.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
And Mr. Harris.
Yes. Dining and Transportation. Back to you, Ms. Perez.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Dining and Transportation Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, present the following nine items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you. I have a motion by Ms. Perez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Perez, seconded by Mr. De La Pietro. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Hearing and seeing none. Roll call, Mr. Wolferman.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
One second.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
And Mr. Harris.
Yes. Personnel Agenda. Mr. De La Pietro.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Personnel Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, presents the following 48 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. De La Pietro. I have a motion by Mr. De La Pietro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. De La Pietro, seconded by Mr. Sedana. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Hearing and seeing none. Roll call, Mr. Wolferman.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes. Mr. Bush, you have any recommendations for us?
I don't at this time.
Excellent. Thank you. Is there any old business that should be brought before the attention of the Board? Is there any new business that should be brought before the attention of the Board? Hearing and seeing none. I want to make just two quick shout-outs here. This week, I believe it was this week, it's been a long week, or perhaps early last week, the district opened up kindergarten registration, so if you have a son or daughter or a neighbor who's turning five before October 31 of next year and wishes to attend full-day kindergarten here in the district, make sure you visit the district website and sign up. Everything is done online, and please have patience on the front end, as the office is very busy, but they will get to you. And we would certainly urge anyone wishing to register for kindergarten to please do so as soon as possible and not wait until the summer months. It's best for us from a logistical standpoint when you do so. So, thank you very much. And then, finally, our three high schools have three spring musicals during the month of March. JFK kicks it off in two weeks with Mamma Mia. I know we have Sister Act, and Woodbridge High School, and one other play at Colonia High School, I forget the name. Please check out their websites. Students work very hard to put on those spring musicals, and they're very talented, and plays are often very entertaining, so be sure to check that out and enjoy that. And with that, any other comments from the Board before we turn it over to the public?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me. I do have one comment.
Sure.
I just want to thank the administration for working with Pomptonian.
Oh, right.
Because the holy month of Ramadan starts next Friday evening, so the students will be fasting in the month of maybe March, and the Pomptonian has made accommodations that students can pick up their breakfast, as well as their lunch, and take that home with them to break their fasts. So I just want to thank the administration for making that possible, and I'm sure you'll have a lot of hungry students, but happy students at the same time. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. All right. Hearing and seeing no others, we'll turn it over to the public. We will now open the meeting for public comment. If you wish to say something, please come to the microphone, provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside for the record. Again, members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. Please limit your comments to no more than five minutes, in accordance with Regulation 1100D. No response will be given until you have fully completed all of your comments, so as not to interrupt your five-minute opportunity to speak. I will also add, in recent meetings, I'm generous when you reach that five minutes. I would ask that you please, in the respect for everyone and following the rules, that you please stick to the five minutes. Ms. Oberberger has a timer here. You'll hear the horn go off, and I'll be enforcing that strictly to the best of my ability. If you want to finish your sentence when it goes off, I certainly respect that and want to be respectful of everybody and their time. So, thank you. If... I'm sure we have guests wishing to speak this evening. Please feel free to line up.
I won't be five minutes. My name's Michael Hahn. I'm from Isling.
Hi.
I am a lifelong resident here. My mother was a resident lifelong here. She moved to Florida recently. My cousins went to JFK. My other cousins went to Woodbridge. I went to Colonia. My other cousins went to Colonia. The reason I'm here is the information that I get. I don't have kids, so I get no information from any neighbors', kids', or anything. I don't know what's going on with the Colonia stuff. I was just told by Al, the guy who's doing the brain cancer stuff with Colonia, that it's a dead issue, that the school district and township is over it. It's remediation of the soil, and that's it. And I just, as a former Colonia High School student, I'm just a little concerned about, is that it? Is that all we're doing? Like, JFK and Woodbridge isn't affected by this? It's just Colonia? And we're just going to leave it that it's a coincidence? Or we're not going to look into the fact that 120 or more teachers, staff, students have brain cancer-specific ailments? My cousin just got diagnosed with cancer. She was a Woodbridge High School. I don't think it's cancer all over the place. It's breast cancer. It's just a concerning thing for someone when so many people, if from a small area, you know, have a very similar illness.[1358.91] And that's why I'm here. I love what you're doing, doing a great job. Haven't complained in 41 years and keep on doing great stuff. It's just that one thing is concerning to me, you know?
Sure, sure. And I'll just kick it off, and I know Dr. Massimino spent a lifetime of time on this. Well, it feels like a lifetime, right? Thank you. We saw the article recently, and it was concerning that it was re-brought up. But Dr. Massimino has been working with our environmental engineer, T and M associates, who is working on this, waiting for some paperwork. We'll have Dr. Massimino, who I know is prepared, to speak to the specifics.
Absolutely. Thank you for coming tonight. So, when this whole started, and I'll do my best to try to be concise, but I want to offer you a full explanation. And then if you'd like to talk afterwards, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. When this was first brought to our attention, it started on Facebook. So, I'm not on Facebook. I'm not on most social media things. So, it came to the mayor's attention, my attention. The primary issue was that they thought there was something contributing to brain tumors. I will tell you, in the time that I, since the investigation started, we have worked with, at the time it was Commissioner La Torret from the Department of Environmental Protection and Commissioner Priscicelli from the Department of Health. So, they were with us literally from Jump Street, because obviously we wanted to talk to the foremost leaders of these agencies, regulatory agencies, oversight, to talk to about what they saw fit. The, and everybody we've spoken to, from both the Department of Health and the Department of Environmental Protection, was if you were looking for an environmental cause of primary brain tumors, the, and Mr. Lupiano said this himself, you would be looking for ionizing radiation. Now, I'm not a scientist, and I'm not environmental, so everything I'm giving you, I'm giving you from the experts that gave it to me. We did a complete, and this was done, the mayor's meeting, council meeting at that time, and we're going back to 2022, was before our Board of Ed meeting. The mayor graciously moved money to make sure that we could immediately start testing and figure out if there was an issue and what we should be doing. The plan that was agreed upon with the DEP, the DOH, and the experts that we had consulted was to look for ionizing radiation. So, we did a complete canvas of the 28 acres. We hired T and M associates. Dr. Kozak was our lead. They then brought in a company that specifically had equipment looking for radiation. They looked like baby carriages. They pushed them all over Colonia High School for weeks. We put radon canisters in the room. Everything that we thought we should do, we made sure that the DEP and the DOH signed off on it and said, yes, if you were looking for this, this is what you would do. The test came back with no sign of ionizing radiation or any kind of radiation at that point. At that point, we then said, okay, is there anything further we need to do? And the answer was no, because if you're looking for an environmental connection to primary brain tumors or central nervous disorders, you would be looking for radiation. That was not discovered. So, at that point, the case was considered closed from that point. We did simultaneously work with the Department of Health to look at and say, what would the number of brain tumors be in a naturally occurring sample size? And I recently, I spoke then, and I, two days ago, spoke with the gentleman that I had spoken to, who was the former chief of neurosurgery from the Princeton Medical Center. Been operating on the brain for 40 years. I would say he would be considered an expert in any room he went in. And he said, you're looking for radiation. If you don't find ionizing radiation, then there is nothing in research that you would say could be connected to primary brain tumors or central nervous system disorders of that kind. When Commissioner Priscicelli's office ran the numbers and the, we had outside people from, the WTA had an epidemiologist from Rutgers look at it. When they ran the numbers, the numbers fell within the same numbers that the gentleman who started the Facebook came up with, somewhere between 98 and 108. That would be the natural occurring numbers without any kind of, and we don't know, you know, why people get different kinds of cancer. That would be the, in a general population, we're going to grab a random sample, those numbers were consistent with what you'd find in a given population. When I spoke to the neurosurgeon, and I called him after this article ran, just because I wanted to touch base with him and make sure there was nothing that we were missing, you know, would you think? He said, no, you have no greater chance of getting a primary brain tumor at Colonia than you do any other spot in the country based on the data of a randomly selected sample size. So, based on the fact that the numbers did not exceed that of a random sample size and that we found no traces of radiation or nothing that would contribute to a primary brain tumor, at that point, the case was considered closed. That was in the spring of 2022. In the fall of 2022, now we're in the 22-23 school year, we had apparent surreptitious take samples without our knowledge, did not ask for us, we did not see or collect them, but took samples of caulk and soil from outside Colonia High School. And the samples came back positive for PCBs and historic pesticides, which anybody who was in construction, and I'm sure there's people here that could talk about what was in caulk and building materials in the 70s, they, we know they contained PCBs that the Department of Health and the DEP gave that to us. That being said, because an open file was created, we hired Dr. Kozak. He is our LSRP. And he said, I will work with the DEP and the EPA, much like taking an oil tank, and it was the example given, an oil tank out of the ground, you would have to remediate the soil around it. Whatever they delineate and say, okay, well, the pesticides run to this or the chemicals that were put on the lawn however many years ago, they start here, they stop here. We're working with the DEP and the EPA to delineate that, and the goal is to have that remediated this summer. We, it's hopeful this summer, this fall, the DEP and the EPA have to sign off on that plan. So, where we're at right now is our T and M, our environmental consultants, have finished the delineation. They are now working on the remediation plan with the federal and state agencies. Once they sign off on the plan, then we will execute said plan, which should close the case. So, and just so you know, any letter that I ever sent out to the community is still on our webpage. If you go to our website underneath Superintendent Notifications, I've kept up the Colonia High School environmental page just because there are parents that may have had kids in elementary school or middle school. And I understand as years go on, things go, articles pop up. Everything we have has been published, because I want the public to see what I sent out. I want the public to see what I received. The testing results are up there, because there is nothing, there's nothing I wouldn't share. I will say this on a personal note, my two children attend Colonia High School. So, when this study was taking place, and I bought a house in Colonia, there was nothing more important to me as a father, and I know I'm wearing my superintendent hat tonight, but I don't take my father hat off ever. There was nothing more important to me than making sure that that school was safe for everybody else's child, as well as the two of mine that were going. The principal of Colonia High School, who was a student there and worked there, his children have come through it. So, I say that with the idea of when it's personal, which most of these things are, because I am a resident here, and it is personal to me, because this is my home too. It did put a little extra importance on it to make sure we exhausted every possible resource. You know, we worked collaboratively with our teachers' union, who went to an epidemiologist at Rutgers, no attachment. We didn't, please check these results, please check the protocols. Is there anything you think we should be doing different? Nope, we agree with what your experts said. We agree with what the experts at the DEP and the DOH are saying. So, at this point, we are waiting for the federal agencies, EPA, DEP, to give us approval for the remediation plan. And then once that's done, I'm hoping, it's this summer or this fall, they will excavate that, put the new fill in, and then we will have done everything that the experts, both agency-wise and those that we've gone to in the private sector, have agreed upon.
That sounds great. You can pretend I'm Facebook posts.
No problem. If you have any other questions, the article ran. I will say, I got one or two phone calls. The parents I talked to were great. The staff at Colonia High School has been tremendous. You know, a lot of us, like you, family that have lived here for years, Island, Colonia. So, it is personal, and it is, it's scary. You know, I have family that lived in that area that had cancer and never went to Colonia. Would I like to know why? I don't think there's a person alive here that has not had an experience with it. It's always personal. It's always devastating, and we always want answers. As far as this is concerned, we've talked to everybody that we can talk to in terms of having an expertise and being knowledgeable about it to make sure that we've gone as far as we can go with it.
Excellent.
Sorry for being long-winded.
No, no, that was terrific. Thank you, Dr. Massimino. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening?
Good evening. Paul Lund, Hope Lawn. First, I want to acknowledge that the five minutes that you allowed us is generous by comparison. We've been to other school board meetings where you get three minutes. And your response, you know, a lot of times there's a very stoic response. They're very quiet. I know they're limited by ethics clause, what they can comment to. But you guys have also been generous with your feedback and oftentimes not even holding back at all. And I want to let you know, I do appreciate that after all this time. Last time I was here, there was a report out. I appreciate the transparency. I want to make sure I got it right, but it appeared that 11th graders in Woodbridge were at 5.5% in proficiency, as far as the proficiency they need to have to graduate. Am I, is that a correct interpretation of that data?
Is that the conclusion?
It was below the state average by a few points as well.
As per sort of my reading, I'll answer your questions at the end.
Okay.
This way, not to take up your five. The clock is still running. But I'll turn it.
And listen, I, I'm here as a taxpayer. Between my property tax, about 62% of my property tax, and all of my state income tax, I think is still dedicated to schooling. I pay about $7,000 a year. And as far as return on investment, I would say it's very poor. And I don't lay that all at your feet. There's a lot of things been going on for a long time that have contributed to poor outcomes, that put us number 40 in the world as far as education is concerned. And if we're supposed to be a leader in the world, I don't think we can afford to be number 40. Now, I'm excited at the prospect of getting rid of the Department of Education on the federal level. I would imagine that you guys would be excited, because the less oversight at that level, the more I think you have probably latitude in what you can accomplish. I'm wondering if you've anticipated the possibility that there's block grants of federal money back to the states and maybe less mandates of clever ideas like No Child Left Behind, which any teacher will tell you was a disaster, filled with unintended consequences. Have you anticipated things you would do differently if the handcuffs were off? And maybe if you had two or three ideas, that'd be great. Lastly, I'd like to bring up, DEI seems as a concept is falling out of favor in corporate. It's fallen out of favor with the current administration. They're pulling funding over DEI. And we could discuss the perception of DEI versus the reality. I'm sure you have a perception, I have a perception, and then in between, somewhere there might be some actual reality around it. But have you guys looked at, instead of looking at disparities in outcomes, let's say academic and indisciplined referrals, and maybe seeing a possibility of racism or cultural insensitivity behind it? Have you looked at the folks, let's say the 35% of kids who are reading proficiently, what they have in common regardless of race? What are they doing right? How much time are they spending in homework? What kind of family stability do they have? You know, what's the structure there? Do they have support at home? And I imagine there was a lot of surveying done for a while, and I'm wondering if those kinds of questions were asked as well. And I think I'll leave it off there for now.
Thank you, Mr. Lund. Try to go through a couple of your questions here. I think the first, yeah, first one up is on data. Would you address that, Mr. Passerino?
Mr. Lund, I don't know which testing data you're looking at. I'm assuming that's one of the more recent ones that we've talked about.
Yeah, it came out, and it was actually available for us last month.
So, I can speak to, you know, the overview of what that test is. And I think the important concept is that we are one of the few districts in the state that have a block schedule, meaning we have a fall and spring semester.
Okay.
So, the students that were tested in that particular testing window are students that did not meet with high school proficiency in the first go-around as an 11th grade student.
Okay.
Or they could be new to the school district. We have an obligation to make sure that all students are provided a pathway to meet with the State Department requirements for high school graduation. So, I can, you know, certainly take a look at that with you. But that number, that was a pretty important piece of context that was given when we talked about the numbers of those students and the students that were testing there.
So, there's room for plenty of growth between now and the end of the school year, for example?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And we do meet with proficiency, I want to say, by the end.
Okay.
I think the district does a pretty good job.
If I may, Mr. Passerino, just for clarity's sake. So, all the students that took the 5%, all of the students who took the test were students who did not previously pass the test? So, all the students who did pass that assessment were not counted in that?
Okay.
Does that help? I just want to.
So, yeah, it was a specific group of students.
So, all the students who passed were not tested in the secondary cohort of that window?
Okay.
That is accurate.
Yes.
Does that help with clarity? Just want to try to give you better context.
Yep, yep. Because that was a shocking number, and I knew there had to be a little bit more to it.
Yeah, it's shocking when we see it.
Okay.
And then finally, just your point about the DOE. Certainly, we're following day-to-day what's going on in Washington. The latest I've heard is that if the DOE were to be broken up by an act of Congress, the pieces would simply disappear. They would simply be shipped off to other departments. So, it would remain to be seen what level of handcuffs, if you will, regulations would continue to exist in terms of reporting. I think anytime money is provided to a local agency, whether from the feds or from the state, there's typically strings attached, reporting requirements, just to ensure that the money is spent appropriately. So, I think we'd be getting ahead of ourselves if we start to dream that the cash will simply be without strings. Would be nice to some degree, but accountability is important as well, and they are other people's tax dollars. So, we'll see what comes of Washington there. So, but I want to thank you for coming out, as always. Thank you.
My name is Gerald Macleod, excuse me, from the Dolores Turco Foundation. And we protect children from abuse, neglect, and exploitation. Today, I'd like to talk about meaning and values and how the lack of it relates to an epidemic of loneliness and unhappiness among young people and what we can do about it now. Some of the reasons why young people are unhappier than any time before is because of increased drug addiction, less human interaction due to cell phones, and fear of the future. This nation has been the freest and most affluent in the world history because of its Judeo-Christian and American values. The first American value was to keep the government as small as possible and non-governmental organizations such as churches to provide Americans with friendship and help the neediest. The second value is middle-class values, such as marriage before having children, family, jobs, self-discipline, and delayed gratification. The third American value was patriotism. Until the 1960s, Americans grew up loving our country, admiring our forefathers, valuing our liberty. What made America exceptional was not its flaws, which are universal, but its virtues. And this identity provided roots and optimism and community and meaning. But unfortunately, a lot of these values are being attacked, and the results are pretty devastating. The majority of births to millennials are unmarried women, and yet single mothers are the loneliest of all American people. Viktor Frankl, in his masterpiece Man's Search for Meaning, found that aside from food, the greatest human need is meaning. And nothing's given people more meaning than religion. And the decline of religion is one of the biggest reasons for loneliness. I realize we cannot promote religion, but public schools can teach values. And they can also teach self-discipline, delayed gratification to avoid risky behaviors. Research shows that if students graduate from high school, get a job, get married, and then have children, there's only 2% chance they'll end up poor. And this is known as a success sequence. I mentioned last time that married couples are the happiest, healthiest, most prosperous, and have the best sex life. But as a part of a poverty prevention program, the Dolores Turco Foundation brought these optimal standards, coupled with tutoring and mentoring to Barringer High School in Newark, which has one of the lowest graduation rates in the state, highest, one of the highest poverty, highest teen pregnancies and STDs and violence. But as a direct result of this pilot, 100 students were accepted to college and 58 maintained a 3.0 average GPA or above. Our curriculum, Relationships Under Construction, has proved very effective in Ohio, where 500,000 students have been trained over the past 20 years, resulting in savings of over $1 billion from costs such as, from risky behaviors such as pregnancies, STDs, addiction, et cetera. The motivation behind this initiative is love for kids, not only to protect them from harm, but to see them flourish. Because if they're given the opportunity to flourish, they're less likely to participate in harmful behaviors. Parents are the most important factor in influencing children and protecting them. But education is also important. If kids are engaged in meaningful activities, if their minds are challenged to higher standards, if they feel good about their accomplishments and have hope in the future, they're more likely to graduate and succeed. If you give them excellence, they will rise to the occasion. If you dumb them down, that's exactly what you can expect. How can we expect better performance? Well, here I just wanted to say, if they're failing, it's because in some way we're failing them. But I've come to believe that failure is the unwillingness to try something new. If at first you don't succeed, you can always try again. Because it's not the one with the greatest talent, intelligence, or ability that succeeds, but the one that never gives up. And I encourage you not to give up on these kids by dumbing them down. Just try new standards, try something new, and you may see them rise to the occasion. May God bless you and bring success in all your endeavors.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Chavartari Woodbridge. You know, the last couple of weeks, myself, I've been traveling all over. And I couldn't get over it. Wherever you go, there is a security. You go to town hall, they got three people at a metal detector. I got state trooper over there. You come over here, you got people, security people, must be really important over here. My question would be, how do we have a security in the schools? When the kids go to schools, before the kids enter the school? Do we have a same kind of security in the school, before kids go to school and after school all the time? That's one of my questions. Because again, there's a lot of, you know, new kids come in and out from different schools, from different places. So, do we have a security when the kids go to school in the classroom? That's my question. Second thing, when we talk about this stuff in Colonia High School, I know a lot of people that went to Colonia High School. One of my friends, as a matter of fact, he was detected two months ago with something. And it's not just what's happening. Why is only Colonia High School? Most of those schools were built in Island, Colonia, built in Santa Ana. I don't say it's something wrong now. What happened 20, 30 years ago when they built those schools? What was built around that school since then and before? And if you look at friends of mine that were Vietnam my age, they didn't get Agent Orange 20 years ago. They get it now. They're dying from it, because it is. It's not what's there now, what was there 20, 30 years ago. I think they should be looking into it again. But again, we talk about the, a lot of stuff over here with the schools. And I said even at town hall, we know how good a town we are, because we are good people. We care. And Mr. Meno said, it's a personal interest for people, because we are same people. But let's take it more seriously. Nobody's blamed each other or people over here. We have to know when they build those schools, what was there before, not what's there now. And I don't think we're looking into it. We just get locally, get some export, not just talking to people that are so-called, maybe have an interest in that thing. Get exports from a country. I mean, if you go, other stuff would happen to the federal government or something like that would close the school, they would close the university. Chickens are dying, they kill all the chickens. They closed the thing. You can't do it what you're going to say, well, wait until the next month, two months, three months. Look into it, because it's got to be the answer. It's not just a coincidence, or it's not just, oh, people die. Yeah, people die from everything. But why is only Colonia? And I tell you, I wasn't kind of interested before, because I didn't know anybody personally that was, that died from it. And I have a friend of mine that's got it, and it looks like there's no cure for that kind of cancer. It's only certain kind of cancer that's taken. So, let's get help. Nobody's going to believe you, I mean, blame you. We have to find the answer, because what does it to the families of those people? Look around, I'm sure you know somebody. What are they really aware? My daughter went to school, my son went to school, my husband went to school. Let's find out. Don't just wait until, you know, something comes out of the sky. And my question would be, again, do we have a security metal detectors when the kids go to schools? Because I think it's important, like over here, it's important. And I think we're very important if you got, every school has a metal detector or one or quarter, see what they're bringing in and what they're bringing out. So, that's my question.
Thank you, Mr. Fertarik. On school security, defer to our principal on that.
I'm just, I'm going to jump on two things, Mr. Fertarik. One, when we did look at Colonia High School, the agencies do do a historical research. They go back as far as they can with records to see what did exist there before. That is part of the process. Are the experts, right, T and M? And I, I'm going to push back on you a little when you said, we're just talking to people. I'm going to say that a, somebody with a PhD in environmental science that does this for a living for 20 years has an expertise. I'm going to say that a neurosurgeon who operated on the brain for 40 years, I am going to call him an expert. So, I'm going to push back a little bit on, these aren't just people I'm talking to, an epidemiologist at Rutgers. Nope, I'm going to say that those are the experts that I'm listening to, regardless of what media or anybody on social media outlets will call themselves. Or I'm not here to say who, you know, who isn't an expert. That's, everybody can debate that. I am going to debate who is an expert, because I do think we talk to the people that we need to talk to, and they did take a look at what existed before. In the report that was given, it was explicit. The PCBs found in that caulk were building materials where they estimated tens of thousands of schools across the country were constructed with the same materials during that time. The historic pesticides, they said you should expect to find them. What we did was look for a connection between what they said caused primary brain tumors, which is ionizing radiation, and we did not find that. We didn't find it. So, I think we were very careful to speak to the right people. I think we were very careful. I think we were very careful to take the right action. I'm gonna disagree with you and say we have to find an answer. Then I need an answer for how a two-year-old gets diagnosed with cancer. Because I don't think there's an answer for that, and I wish there were. I'd like an answer for the family members that I lost that live in Island that didn't go to Colonial High School. I'd like an answer for that. And I'm not gonna have one. Because unfortunately, I think we can all agree, sometimes there's just, there's not an answer, and we would love one. Right? Because we've all lost loved ones, and I don't think any one of us would be at fault for wanting some kind of explanation, because when you feel that loss, it is devastating. So to say it was something that, you know, we need to, I don't know that we could have exhausted. I've had more sleepless nights over this than anybody will know when we were looking at it, because my concern for the community couldn't be higher. Right? And my kids weren't in the school at the time, but I wanted them to go there. So I see it a little bit differently than you. I would say you should probably go back and look at some of the reports they did and some of the things that they did share with us in terms of what we did, what is there, what we didn't find, what is connected. This story keeps jumping around. Not all of the people on that list lived in Colonial. There were people that went to Colonial High School for one year that were on that list. So I now have the question of, so you could go there for one year and 40 years later get something, and we're gonna tie that back to Colonial? That's a tougher connection. The article that ran, okay, I would ask the question, did they live in Colonial, or did they work in Colonial High School for a time? The one thing that we don't talk about is lifestyle and other factors of, where did you live? Where did you work? What did you do? So I think there's a lot that goes into it. We've looked at all of the, we've looked at every detail, every variable, every entity that we should have looked at, guided by experts that we reached out to. The neurosurgeon from the Princeton Medical Center reached out to me two and a half years ago because he had written an email and an op-ed piece to several media outlets that wouldn't publish it. And he said, you should know this, because I did the calculations separate from the DOH and came up with the same numbers. This would be the number in a naturally occurring population anywhere. So I feel very strongly about that. It is, it is personal. This is my community that I share with, you know, 100,000 others. So in regards to the security in schools, we had a president's council meeting last week, where that's a PTO organization that kind of oversees things that happen throughout the district and really works with building PTOs. And I said, as I've said to the board president and members of the security committee, I think we are at a point where we can leverage the technology. I'm not looking for metal detectors, I'm looking for weapons detection systems. Why? If they're smarter and they're more effective and they're more versatile, I'm in. Why? I don't know that there's a cap on the amount of things you can do to make people feel safe. I will tell you, in the time here, my administration and the board have worked hand in glove to make sure that the cameras were upgraded, the phone systems were upgraded, we upgrade infrastructure all the time. We have hired security officers that didn't exist before this administration to be in the buildings at the high school level. We have security officers when the kids leave, because we know we have athletes coming in and out of there. So from 7:00 in the morning to the time those kids leave and pack up their soccer bags, we have a security officer at that school. Safety, whether it's health-related or whether it's physical, it's never a secondary concern. So what we have in the schools, we do have security officers in the schools. I am Tuesday or Wednesday taking part in a webinar where a vendor is going to show us one of the new cutting-edge, and I don't have to understand all the technology that they're leveraging, I just need to know that it works. Tell me that it's gonna identify weapons or anything that could possibly hurt our students, and that'll be a conversation that I continue to have with the board. I have it with the, you know, the teachers' union, I've had it with the administrators' union, I've had it with parents. Why? I want to know their input. Everybody seems to be supportive of it, and it's something we'll continue to look into. I don't know that there's an amount of security you can have where people will say, oh, that's too much.
Mr. Dr. Mr. You're right, days of technology, you know, to go to airports, you go to other federal buildings, things like that. But again, right now, what you say, you do not have a, you do not have a, you do not have a metal detectors at a school, do you?
No, not at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Fertar, we've known each other a long time, and I think we respect each other, but to suggest that only at Colonial High School do cancer cases come from, that's patently false. Sadly, and our hearts go out to the families impacted anywhere, unfortunately, cancer is everywhere in every community. So to suggest that, you know, there's some prevalence of cancers, Dr. Massimino's alluded to twice now, it happens everywhere, unfortunately, and there's nothing unique in a negative way. Oh, well, any kind of cancer is negative, but there's nothing unique about Colonial High School relative to cancers.
Mr. Maris?
Yes, thank you. Good evening to the council and the president. And just following up on what you said, I think we all agree, it's, this is not a political issue. It's a, it's a concern for the whole community, and for anybody to lose anyone or have to deal with medical costs because of something like this is horrific, and hopefully, it will be absolutely minimized. So that said, I thought earlier on, I heard Dr. Massimino talking about soil remuneration coming up. Okay. So is there an indication that there is contaminants within that soil? And if so, whether it be at Colonial or any other structure under the ownership of either the township, more specifically to the school board, is there liabilities attached to that? Should anyone come after, after the school? And I'm sure that your lawyer, Mr. Bush, is going to probably respond to that question. That's one of my questions. There was something this evening, and I missed it, I forgot the procedural, and I'm not sure it would have fit in right at the time you were doing it anyway, but in tonight's agendas, and I think it's on page two, which would probably be under financial, but it speaks to audit requirements, and $750,000 or more in federal funds requires one type of an audit, less than that requires something different. Typically, how often do we see that we are getting $750,000 or more in federal funds? Let me, I'm sorry.
I'll let you finish.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So that's one of my questions. And how are those audits conducted? I know you have to do an annual report, and you have an outside firm that comes in. And if I can, and I don't mean to make this sound political, but Doge is in right now. So they're really diving in and doing in-depth reviews, not just audits in the sense of, are you complying with the current regulations? But really looking at, how is that money being spent? And I don't think your auditors are mandated or chartered or paid to do that. They're looking at, did you spend it correctly? Does it meet state, federal requirements? Without really looking at the real purpose of how that money was used and following it down, as we're seeing on TV right now. So that's one of the questions. I think it's gonna become very relevant in the days to come, especially with what's going on with Washington DC. There again, there are a lot of changes coming down right now. Are you anticipating any impact to the funding to this school from the federal government cutting back on a lot of educational programs that may affect state and local governments as far as funding for schools? And then finally, my question goes back to DEI, and I know it was addressed earlier, and, you know, we have done a review, as you may well know. I got a lot of information about salaries, and this is, again, nothing to do with Mr. Ali. I think he's a wonderful man, he's got a great education, but I'm looking at the position that he holds now at approximately $179,000, well, at $179,400 per year, which is a pretty happy salary. And is that department, is that particular job still required in light of the fact that we've gone from CER to DEI, and then, if you will, student access and engagements, if we want to play semantics? We have an assistant superintendent, we have principals, we have vice principals. Why do we need one individual at that salary level, whoever it may be, to do that position at this point in time? We're done with DEI. We have, we got along for many, many years. I grew up in this town, I was educated in this town, fortunately. And we didn't have that. So why do we have it today? And those are my questions, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Maris. We'll take each question one by one here. You had asked about remedial action. Yes, it does need to take place at Colonial High School. And Dr. Massimino, correct me if I'm wrong, it had to do with, because of the soil disturbance that took place, we became aware of it, we needed to act as a result.
Correct. If, if you look at the, the letter that was sent to the mayor in March of 2023 from the Department of Health, the conclusion is pretty clear, based on the indoor air quality and the other set, the, I'll cut to the good stuff. Harmful health effects are not likely for students staff at Colonial High School from indoor air exposures to PCBs and pesticides. PCB levels were below the US EPA's health-based guidelines for PCBs in schools. Chloride and concentrations were below, levels were no harmful effects, no harmful health effects were observed in toxicological studies. Finally, there is no concern for increased theoretical cancer risk from exposures to PCBs and pesticides in the school. The whole dataset precedes that. I don't want to bore you with the details, it's an eight-page letter. The DEP and the DOH would not allow Colonial High School to be open if what was found in the soil, which I'm gonna go out on a limb and say, if we tested anybody's soil hill, you're probably gonna find an herbicide or a pesticide. You were in construction, so I'm probably preaching to the choir, you're probably more familiar with it than most, with the sense of, that stuff is put down every time you're doing a foundation, so that there's no termites and, you know, no intrusion of pets or animals into your foundation. So, yeah, once the test happened and it was disturbed, that triggers the process for it to have to be remediated, the same way as if, I never know I have an oil tank and I don't touch it, I don't have to do it, the second that I start poking and I pull it out, I have to remediate the yard.
Can I jump on the liability question here?
Yes.
I can, Mr. Maris. Nice to see you again. I think the, the issue, there's this presumption in the public in general that entities like us don't necessarily want the truth. You know, I mean that in terms of our cynical society. But, but the reality is, from a liability standpoint, one of the most important elements of an organization is that if you have any sort of knowledge or reason to know that something even could exist, especially something as serious as what we've been talking about tonight, cancer, family members, right? Community members, neighbors. It's, it's, it's almost an over-the-top response. You know, we have a burden to answer a question that's very difficult to answer, so we go out of the way to make sure that we could never be accused of leaving any stone unturned. And this district, whether it's a response to this or any allegation in any other case from a liability perspective, has to make sure that we consult the best experts, right? The most qualified people. Cover-ups don't exist the way they used to, and that's a great thing. And as much as society is cynical, the media drives this narrative overall that there's issues, or waste, for example, as you've mentioned, and you talked about Doge, for example. The school district is one lean machine. School districts in New Jersey in general are particularly lean, and that's because they're forced to be, not just as a result of the rigorous audits that they have to conduct the way they do, but because they are generally two-thirds of the taxpayer property tax in, in each community. And it's a, it's, it's, it's something where every single line item is really carefully addressed, and essentially, we've had, it's like, Doge is like old for us. We've been doing Doge for, you know, as many years as the school district exists, because, you know, every time there's budget cuts, you see it. I mean, this year, the governor's giving his address on Tuesday, I think. And, and from what I understand, there's going to be some, I don't know if this house is gonna affect this district, but, you know, our firm represents 98 school districts throughout New Jersey, and there's some freaking out going on, understandably, because the budget isn't gonna be as, as large as it normally is, and some districts may have to have cuts. So school districts are really careful, because any given year, that could happen, and so they have to be lean and mean to prepare for years that may be more difficult. But from a liability perspective, I would say that this district has gone over, and in coordination with our office and with insurance council and everybody else, to ensure that there is not a specific knowable concern at Colonial High School, for liability reasons and many others.
If I may quickly, before you answer my third.
Ethical reasons, beyond liability, ethical reasons.
Before you answer my third question, and I totally agree with you, and my question was not to raise public fears, but to hopefully, through your answers, align, allay, I should say, public fears about this. Because I think you're doing an excellent job to point, schools five and six were gonna be built somewhere else. We found out it was contaminated soil, you didn't go there. So I think that sets a real precedent and speaks to the sincerity of this board at all, how you treat these types of things. So I think you are presenting us with the facts as best you know them, and we proceed accordingly.
Thank you.
Okay, and then my third question again.
Sure, yeah, we're gonna get to them. There was a question on the finance and insurance agenda. I couldn't identify it specifically, but I think in general, you had, you had asked a question, $750 million, $750,000 or more, does each one get audited? I'll turn to Mr. Wolfman.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's, actually, four questions, that number, yes.
On your audit questions, which is the part I can fill you in on. So first to know what our auditors do, they follow a state-mandated requirement, that's what they're auditing, in terms of how the money is spent, is it spent properly, things of that nature. Also, we have a budget, you're asking a little bit about efficiency, so we have a budget, which you've seen. They're making sure that everything that's within those budget lines that we gave to the public and the board voted on are being met, that we're not buying something that's outside of the budget lines with the funding. As far as your question about the $750,000 audit, that's called a single audit, and we do have two grants that I can think of off the top of my head, ESEA, IDEAB, both of which have been well over the $750,000, well over a million, for years. Those get audited on a regular basis for that reason, so we do have them. And I think, as far as preparing for potential cuts, I have spoken with the administrators at this table in preparation of whatever scenario comes along, we're prepared for, you know, flat, increase, decrease. You know, we've, we've gone through all the different possibilities to make sure that the budget can come across properly. So I think I answered all those audit questions you had.
And the last one is the position on DEI.
Sure. And thank you, Mr. Wolfman, for addressing a number of those. We'll put an extra point on the Doge question. I know annually and throughout the year, this board, we have committee meetings where we ask what I would think are sometimes hard, penetrated questions, show us the math, demonstrate examples, Mr. Streebwasser and other members ask for reports, and we want to know every contract that we have. I sign, as you can see, every contract, you know, for special education or transportation here. So we're constantly looking, and, you know, don't get us wrong, you know, there's things we probably miss, there's things we could probably be better and sharper on, and we certainly have members of the public who are welcome to ask good questions that we could also.
When you have your budget hearings, you allowed the public to come in and speak, so we have that opportunity to address anything that's going on. Thank you.
Right. And then finally, you know, Mr. Ali, I don't, I think you were here last meeting, but, you know, myself and Dr. Massimino, we rattled off the different forms in which Mr. Ali's position has taken and where it has landed. At this point, he's doing a tremendous amount of data collection, surveying, you know, just this past week, we talked about his, basically, what he's working on now, and for example, you know, CTE programming and course trajectory analysis. Basically, what he's doing is collecting data with vendors to identify, what are the courses of the future in education that our students need to be competitive in the 21st century?
Wonderful.
And then, of course, you know, really, from the beginning, sort of the, you know, DEI became sort of just a new term for character education, something we were doing for a very long time, and something he's gonna continue to work on, and hugely important. He makes a salary, of course, and what I would point out, Dr. Massimino, I think said it, you know, in my ear quickly, I agree with him, and I was gonna say it myself, was the fact that we're actually a district that's light on administrators, we're light relative to some of our peer districts. So he's a part of our team, he's a bit of a Swiss Army knife, similar to a couple other employees I could think of. So, you know, to date, he's proved his worth, and, you know, his job, I'm sure, will continue with it over time.
If I can, Mr. Fertar, just for the sake of, I don't, we don't have a deputy BA, right? And we have a, we're the eighth biggest district in the state. We don't have a deputy assistant superintendent for HR. We have over 2,000 employees. So I say that with the idea of, when Dr. Jankarelli's out and there's an HR issue, I handle it. I don't know superintendents of districts comparable to my size do that. I have looked at their chain of command and their hierarchy. I probably I probably have harassed the board, because I always will take more help downtown, the days get long, and we do wear a lot of hats. But I do think Mr. Ali came in at a time, you know, after the pandemic, where we were looking at a lot of things in terms of instruction and need, transience amongst our students, and he has fulfilled a lot of roles. We will probably always agree to disagree on how we each define DEI or its purpose or its intention, and I, you know, I respect that. The reality is, we have a lot of students in Woodbridge from a lot of different backgrounds that have a lot of different needs. Our goal is to meet the needs. I don't care where the student comes from, what religion they practice, what race they are. The goal is, and Mr. Ali and Central Office have this conversation a lot, it's definitely a new demand, there are definitely different changes. I've been doing this for 23 years. What I'm doing now, and what, you know, teachers are, is completely different than that, when I started and what it looked like, and I'm sure people that were at the end of their career, when I was just starting, would say, oh, you have no idea when I started. Yes, things are changing and moving, and I wouldn't disagree with that. I do think Mr. Ali has become an asset in the sense of, he services all 24 schools. So.
Well, as I said, DOGE-ing, if I can say that, and I've been doing that for quite a while, as you all know, but obviously, he is ROI, return on investment, and it's a good investment.
I agree.
I thank you for that.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You remember the old rules about the back and forth.
Mr. Maris.
All right. I just want to conclude this evening's meeting with some prepared remarks as it relates largely to some of the previous public meetings. So I'll start here. I'll start with my frustration. Our meetings have somehow become a forum of political and ideological speeches on matters that stretch the truth or are just false as it relates to what's happening in the Woodbridge Township School District. Last meeting, I heard accusations of indoctrination, sexualizing children, chemical mutilation, and performing surgery on children, and my new favorite, denying inalienable rights. These were things that were said. I re-watched the meeting last night. I've said this once, and I will say it again, because I suppose to some degree it bears repeating. This board has discussed the transgender policy, 5145, numerous times. After countless conversations with legal counsel, the board continues to stand by the model policy because it exists to guide the district and its staff from a legal standpoint. As I've said numerous times, our school counselor's number-one job is to facilitate conversations between students and their parents on any matter, including the issue of gender transition. Only in the most extreme circumstances in which students' health and well-being is jeopardized by their own parent will the district act in the best interest of the child as per the policy. Reasonable parents know that this district does everything it can to facilitate lines of communication between the school, parents, and students, and that's why, after two-plus years of this policy, actual parents are not protesting this policy. Last meeting, one speaker suggested the policy was done in the darkness of night and with no transparency. I'd remind Woodbridge Township residents that our board policies are voted on twice by this board over a course of two meetings, a month apart, can always be found on our transparent school district website. Furthermore, even if this policy were to be rescinded, as many members of the public, well, I tricked that, members, some members of the public have advocated, many of whom are out of town as well, we would still need to abide by New Jersey state law. If we were to violate our policy or the law itself, we would be subject to lawsuits under the state's law against discrimination, as well as defend ourselves against the state, as other rogue districts have learned. As president of this board, I have no interest in wasting taxpayer dollars defending such a position. On the health education curriculum, specifically the issue of sex, I continue to cringe at some of the incredible misinformation shared by members of the public. For starters, and has been statewide policy since the 1980s, if a parent wishes to remove their children from any lesson in health class, they may do so without penalty. Despite recent updates, the state standards on the matter, it could be surmised, my own opinion, that our district's parents continue to trust this board and administration, that the material taught is age-appropriate, by virtue of only a handful of parents seeking more information from our central administration. And of course, any requests to be dismissed from class have been honored. In recent meetings, I have sat by and listened to adults, none of whom are educators in our district, and none of whom are parents of our current students with access to our curriculum, who have so assertively opined on our health curriculum. The following has been said and repeated at multiple meetings at this Board of Education about our district, that we are teaching sex for pleasure, teaching kids from an early age how to pleasure themselves, teaching that reproduction of children is to be avoided at all cost. No surprises here, wrong, wrong, wrong. On an age-appropriate basis, we teach things like consent, marriage, childbirth, abstinence, choices and consequences of engaging in sexual activity, such as STDs, along with the correct definitions, information that is factual and age-appropriate by a licensed teacher, and not learned on the internet or from students' peers. It was said at the January meeting that we teach our second graders that there's 77 genders to choose from. Funny, I read the health textbooks this week and found no such reference. Why? Because there's adults who wish to instill fear in the reasonable parents, as well as sow division, disinformation, and distrust within our public schools. Finally, last meeting was suggested that the school districts, I presume ours, since it was brought up here at a Board of Education meeting, needs to stop dwelling about slavery. I think that's wrong as well. We teach in this district American history, the good parts and the bad. We teach that our country has done amazing things, served as a beacon of religious freedom, created millions of jobs and opportunities for immigrants from near and far, defeated fascists and Nazis, and advanced medicine and science, saving millions of lives here and around the world, just to name a few. Just like the good, we teach about our mistakes, slavery, forced removal and relocation of Native Americans, Japanese internment camps, and a legacy of Jim Crow, to name a few. It all happened, and I think our students need to know that. We don't teach victimhood, we teach how painstakingly slow progress can be and how far we've come. We don't teach guilt or oppression, we teach character education, how every person deserves dignity and respect. The Woodbridge Township School District educates 14,000 students, coming from incredibly diverse backgrounds, including on the basis of income, national origin, race, religion, and so on. Approximately 11,000 of those students had their education disrupted by COVID, accompanied by fear and anxiety, maybe some of them lost a parent, lost a parent or another loved one, or a source of income, or their home. Some students have joined us from war-torn countries like Ukraine, Haiti, and Palestine, or relocated here due to natural disasters in Puerto Rico. Today, dozens of languages are spoken by our students. Homelessness throughout the state and country has surged since pandemic aid has dried up, and the cost of housing has risen. As a result, we face innumerable challenges to help our students and their families prepare for life, a career, and a higher education. Our challenges are real and serious. I would kindly ask that all parties to please consider putting the students of Woodbridge Township first. This board wants to know how we can serve our students, parents, and taxpayers better. Let's focus on the things this board can control, and not the things in society that run counter to your personal beliefs. Political speech is permitted here, as does anyone from in-town or out-of-town wishes to come here and speak their mind, but I promise you, our time can be better spent. Our kids are counting on us. I thank you for your consideration. Thank you. May I entertain a motion to adjourn?
No motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Streebwasser, seconded by Mr. Delapichro, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned. We'll see you at the next meeting on March 13th. Thank you.